The Town of Farmington. Respecting History, Planning the Future.
Good evening. I must welcome you all to the Farmington Town Council meeting and ask you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there are no public hearings tonight, no presentations or recognitions, new items, none. And public comment. And at this time, I would ask anyone who would like to, has anything to say to the council, for public comment to come up to the mic. You have five minutes to speak, and we'd like you to give us your name and your address. And I just want to make clear that when we do have public comment, we don't have a discussion back and forth, but I think it's really important for you to understand that we're listening, we're taking everything down, and any questions that you might have, we will look into and get back to you so that you have the answers that you need, and they'll be in our minutes. But just so that you know that we, it's not that we're not listening, but we just don't go back and forth during public comment. Okay? So if anyone would like to address the council, please come up. And tonight is our first night of live streaming.
Good evening. My name is Brian Bell from Six Nadia's Way, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am here to express my great concern with the potential of having a cemetery in a town-owned open space directly next to our neighborhood. A little over two years ago, we moved to Nadia's Way. We felt very lucky to find the Nadia's Way development adjacent to a beautiful and rare piece of undeveloped open space. We were shocked to learn just recently that the open space we envisioned the kids of our neighborhood enjoying was being considered as a potential location for our cemetery expansion. Prior to purchasing our home two years ago, we did what we considered to be our due diligence on the open space. We learned that in 2004, Donald Tinty donated the historical barn and adjacent open space to the town for what has been described in multiple sources as for use as a family park. In addition, prior to purchasing a house, I reached out via email to the town planner, William Warner, and asked the following question: Does Farmington open space mean there are no plans to ever develop this area? Or is it possible that the town could use this space for its own purpose? Could the designation of open space ever change in the future? The following is a direct response from the town planner. It was preserved as permanent open space, but that does allow the development of sports fields. There are no plans for that now, but it is a possibility that you should keep in mind. Based on this information and the thought that Mr. Tinty reportedly wanted to use this as a family park, I felt comfortable proceeding with the purchase of my home, never imagining we may be discussing a cemetery. Just recently, we obtained a copy of the deed from March 12, 2004, from Donald Tinty to the town of Farmington. In the interest of time, I will summarize the relevant points. It says, "The Donald Tinty Family Park shall be open to the public and used and maintained by the town as a park, with improvements and/or facilities to be determined from time to time and implemented by the town in accordance with the recreational needs of the town." This may include, but not limited, athletic fields, nature trails, and river access. I reviewed the discussion from the September 11 council meeting last month, and when asked if there were any restrictions on the property, town manager Egan responded that there were no formal restrictions. I am not an attorney, so I don't know what constitutes a formal versus informal restriction, but at least to the average person, the deed seems clear that the land was intended for recreational use. I just can't see how a cemetery, even if surrounded by walking trails, comes close to fitting that vision. I did not know Don Tinty, and unlike the town manager, I am not privy to the discussion she had with him, but it just seems so hard for me to understand how a cemetery fits into this vision of the land. The following are my concerns with a cemetery in the Tinty Farms area. The land in question is surrounded directly by residential areas on three of the four sides: Nadia's Way, Main Street, and Old Canal Crossing. Putting a cemetery here is literally putting a cemetery in the middle of a bunch of homes. Five of the six zones on my street have young children. They play in the cul-de-sac, and they play in the field. We see other neighbors from across the field walking their dogs and playing as well. The addition of the cemetery will likely increase traffic and decrease safety, in addition to all but eliminating any enjoyment they can get out of the space. The addition of a cemetery will immediately result in changing the entire feel of the neighborhood to a happy and lively place, to a constant reminder of the things we don't want to be forced to think about on a daily basis. Being a new cemetery, I assume it will be common to have digging and to listen to the noise associated with that. Also, as a new cemetery, I would expect funeral sessions to be common and dramatically increase the traffic in this area. I have not had the opportunity to look at actual data yet, but I am very concerned with how this will affect our property values. I consulted multiple real estate agents, and they said without question, this would decrease the potential buyer pool. There are many reasons why, including personal preference, but also cultural reasons that they backed up with many real-life experiences. I personally would not have bought the house if I knew my daughter would be walking to and from the bus stop while graves are being dug and burials are being performed. Given that I learned this only two days ago, I have not had a chance to thoroughly review the other four locations that are being considered. Based on initial review, there must be a location that will not as dramatically change the feel and safety of a neighborhood as this area does. I also think you should reconsider vacant commercial spaces. At the last meeting, it was mentioned that taking commercial land off the tax rolls was not ideal. I get that, it makes complete sense, but at what cost? Respectfully, I understand that you have a very difficult task of finding a cemetery location. I please hope you all try to put your families in our shoes and imagine looking out your front door to a cemetery when you never thought that was a possibility. For the sake of our kids and our neighborhoods, I please hope you will consider the effect this will have and consider other options, and I very much thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Krantz from Two Nadia's Way. I echo everything that Brian has just mentioned. My wife and I, two years ago, did the same thing. We purchased our house. We actually custom-built it, so it's not a house, it's a home. Everything from the doorknobs to the carpets to the outlets and switches, all chosen by us. We also reviewed the deed, and we envisioned that our children would have a place to perform their recreational activities with children from the adjoining neighborhood. And I do ask that the town council interpret the wording of these documents in a reasonable person, as we did when we decided to purchase our house, and to further consider the detriment not only to the value of the properties adjacent to the Tinty property, but also the mental and well-being of those who live there. Again, I did not imagine that my children would be waking up every day, getting ready for school, walking out the front door to the bus stop, and be reminded of death, grief, loss, pain, sadness, when they come home, or when they play outside, or when they greet their friends at the front door, when they look out the front windows while doing homework. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm here with my wife Brenda. We live at 18 Old Canal Crossing. We are directly abut the field. I won't say I was friends, but I knew Joe and Don, and he'd come over and yell at me from time to time, a lot of my kids running around in his field. And I had many dialogues about what he planned to do with the field over time, and he even asked me what I'd prefer. And I know the cemetery was absolutely off his list, and I'd be surprised if it's not written in that document specifically, because he was asked at the time. His ultimate plan was to make it a historic field, because he felt there was some battles there. And then finally, before his death, and when he gave out the land and how he's kind of split it up, his plan was, really, the big part was an auto-bond section to look over Scott Swamp. He pictured a dock with the pillars for the birds. And he was pretty clear on that. When the document finally came out, and I think it was 2003, 2004, about what the town was going to do to it, I couldn't make heads or tails how that directly related to what he described the field could be. And I thought he was pretty clear. He had a piece of land here, he had a piece of land in Westbrook, he had a piece of land up north. He introduced a lot of animals into the state. You know, he's really a forgiving guy, or a giving guy, and he'd drive across, he was too big to walk, so he'd drive across the field in a Buick station wagon, unless he was plowing, pushing the trees back in. If you don't know, there is a tree there that still hasn't been moved, and it's kind of a shame, because he had to plow on an old Jeep, you know, the real Indian Cherokee. He used to drive and push everything around the field, and he was very particular. I took down his fence, he came over and talked to me, but I said, you know, it's a barbed wire fence, it's rusted, it's dangerous. And like I said, he was great. I drove my motorcycle in the field, he didn't even mind that, he'd just come over and say, "Keep it down." So we got home tonight and got the little note that there was a meeting today. I'm not really sure how we missed it. You know, we got our flyer, and it said there was a big dump pickup, which is a big deal for me, I gotta get some stuff out. But this actually surprised me, a cemetery, because he was very clear, you know, when he was alive, that that wasn't what he wanted there. And there was a lot of people, he didn't want to sell it, and he wanted it to be, like I said, his focus was what he was going to do with Scott Swamp. And we do have a neighbor that walks back and forth and actually takes advantage of Scott Swamp. We see kayaks go back and forth, which is nice. So I have 280 feet, approximately, maybe it's 230, but it's clearly more than 200. It's, my house parallels it, it's 25 feet right at the border in the back. I'm at the end of the cul-de-sac on Old Canal Crossing. And yeah, I'd have a real problem with what's going on there, and it is a wetland runoff for the hill. You can't mistake it. When the water comes up, it actually fills half the field, you know, or at least we've seen it over a period of time. So I'd be very disappointed if they even attempted a cemetery, and I'd probably be someone to pretty strongly fight, because I don't think I could live next to a cemetery, so I'd have to move. But I'm, you know, if I need to put something in the record, I'd, you know, I'd swear to what Don planned, and I'll go back through the records in 2003, and I'd be surprised if it isn't specifically in there, because people did try to make it a cemetery, and that is not what he intended or even thought of it. So, that's it.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi. My name's Glenn Mozbak. I live at 17 Old Canal Crossing. I think I was the first house on the street, and I built it 30 years ago. To echo Jim, well, my property would abuts where you want to, you're talking about the cemetery, and that's a dumb idea. I'm just telling you. It makes, you know, like, our town is almost 400 years old, and I don't know, like, the forefathers, you know, the planners back in the day, as you come into Farmington, I'm sure they never envisioned putting a cemetery as you reach, as you walk into town. Another thing with Tinty, I didn't know him that well, and my kids are the same age as Jim's, and he would be driving around, and that guy never, ever said, "Wow, this would be a great place for a cemetery." It wasn't in his, he never even thought of it. I know he didn't, and to, you know, validate what Jim said. Over the 30 years I've lived there, I've seen a lot of people come by with metal detectors, and, you know, because it wasn't encampment for Rochambeau back in the Civil War, I mean, Revolutionary War. I don't think the town has ever taken advantage of that with, because, I don't know, I feel like we're losing our history. But in this sense, this would be a great educational tool for kids and everything, as a passive trail, education over there. And then also, there is a neighbor who uses the kayak and walks her dogs back there, and, you know, we're losing our space in Farmington, and in all towns, and I think this would be a really bad decision. You know, I'm not sure where the other places are mentioned, but I know on, like, New Britton Avenue, there's a lot of open space. I know there's, you know, there's a lot of other spots to consider, and I wish you would consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lori Tomkowitz. I also live on Old Canal Crossing, Three Old Canal. I'm going to come from a little bit different angle. We moved here four years ago, and my family of four were pretty excited to see that big open space over on Nadia's Way. When we moved in, there were no homes there or anything yet. When the homes were built, I was still excited, good families and more people and more community. In my opinion, I really believe that that entryway into Farmington, when we drove in house hunting, that's a big deal for people to see, a place for community, a place for families, a place for neighborhoods. I think that any kind of recreational area, any kind of park, that says a lot when you're driving into a town, and those are some of the first things people look at with families. I think it would be a big detriment to the town to put a cemetery there. I know my son runs through the field to go visit his friends on the other side on Farmstead. There's no sidewalks on Route 10. There's no way for my kids to get over anywhere from Old Canal. We're kind of stuck on our own little island there. We have a lot of kids on Old Canal for a small street, so, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Melinda Pritz, and I live at Two Nadia's Way. And I'm here joining my community just to express my concern about the pending choice. Don Tinty Family Park was part of our consideration in coming into Connecticut. And actually, I had lived in Plainville prior. I'm one of the opposite of what you hear about. In my late twenties, I moved into Connecticut from out of state, and I followed my career and grew, basically grew up here as an adult, and chose to start my family and build a home, and was very careful in considering where we built, because in living in Plainville, there were several members of our community there that were very aware of Don Tinty and his wishes. And even, even the director of my daycare at the time said, "You know, that's protected land, that's restricted, you have to be careful." So we were very careful in talking to our builder and considering putting a house there and what it would mean to this community. We didn't want our future neighbors to be upset with us, and I'm so thrilled that everyone is here tonight. Thank you for coming, and we share your sentiments. It was wonderful to hear you speak about what he actually did want, because it was something that we thought about in choosing to build. You can tell I'm a little emotional about it, because in all honesty, since learning about this the last few days, this has been my state of mind. I am a clinical supervisor, supervising many clinicians, mental health therapists, and multiple programs around the state, and so my own mental health is something that I have to take very seriously. It's very literally part of my job to have good work-life balance and make sure that I'm very well-regulated as I listen to the clinicians' process with me, some of the traumas that they've been hearing confidentially, and really protecting their clients, making sure that they're able to tell me enough so that I can guide them in the decisions that they make about how to help people. In hearing all of those stories, I have to really guard against vicarious trauma. Unfortunately, one of the ways that my subconscious deals with the extra energy when I'm not able to offset that well enough is dreams about mindless humans who can't have any insight or integrate. So you got it, zombies. So when I learned about this potential cemetery just across the way, literally out my front door, I've been very, very dysregulated. It literally is the only thing that I can think about. And for the first time in my professional life, this is the first time I've not been able to manage that energy very well. So I need to let my community and the council know that, because I need you to understand how important this is, and that for my community, for my family, for my professional well-being, I am asking the town council to reconsider and to really look carefully at the sites that you're considering and to remove Don Tinty Family Park from the list. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Lou Machellaby, and I live on 10 Nadia's Way. I just want to say I agree with all the sentiment of all my neighbors, and I just want to touch upon one point. The name of the property is Don Tinty Family Park. A cemetery is a final resting place for people and should be respected as such. Trying to intermingle a park or a walking trail with a cemetery is nearly an impossible task. In addition, it may be considered disrespectful to the dead. I personally wouldn't walk through a cemetery to use the trails, and don't know anyone who feels comfortable to do that either. To create a walking trail or access to the river through the cemetery is not feasible. Cemeteries are generally the opposite of what an athletic field or park is. When I think of a park or a walking trail, it is a happy place, where people go to light off steam and have some fun. People want to laugh, talk loudly, maybe play loud music, or throw a ball. All this should not happen at a cemetery. To think that the property can be used for both is unrealistic. Most importantly, it is not where I would want any of my loved ones buried. If you intermingle the two, how can you prevent kids from throwing balls, or worse, people who let their dogs loose? The Cemetery Association has a duty to find a location where one can pay their respects to their loved ones who have passed away, with no worries of a dog leaving anything behind, or a loud party of people walking down the river to use the canoe. If this town starts disregarding the intentions that were set from Mr. Tinty's generous donation, this is an absolute deterrent for people who would have considered leaving part of their estate to the town. People work hard, and when they choose to donate land or money, the donor expects the town to abide by their wishes, not change the original intention for the land to suit the town's needs, or because they feel they're under pressure from another association. There is no ambiguity as to what his intent was for the property. He wanted people to enjoy the property. A cemetery certainly does not fit that description. I did not know Mr. Tinty personally, but reading the deed, his intent is clear. To disregard his intent and generous donation because of a different agenda or pressure from the Cemetery Association is a dangerous slippery slope that will be created by the town. I urge the town council and Cemetery Association to go back and reevaluate other land that is available. The Tinty property is not an appropriate place for a cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Pickett, and I am at 400 Main Street, which is the yellow house by the barn that also abuts the property. I don't have any prepared statements, but just a couple of sentiments that I wanted to share. I am the one who goes back there and kayaks and walks the dogs on an almost daily basis, so I've been able to see the meadow over these past 10 years that we've lived here and all the seasons, and have absolutely fallen in love with it. In fact, if I'd had more time, what I wanted to do was to take a panoramic photo at sunset and show you guys just how beautiful it is, all the different colors. And what comes to mind with the meadow is life and living. This summer, I've discovered probably 30 monarch caterpillars back there and kept tabs on them, and that's the first time I've seen them come back. Every year, I go looking at the milkweed, because there are so much milkweed, and every year, I would go looking at it, and this is the first year they've really surged back. And they're beautiful, and they're in decline, so there's that. There's, the colors back there are just absolutely gorgeous. My husband mows a pathway so that we and people from Canal Crossing can be connected to, they're not on their own little island, and be connected to the Farmstead Lane, and it's a spectacular treasure. And the other sort of practical considerations is going back there so often. I do know that it floods quite a bit. I think on a yearly basis, it probably, there's standing water. At least once a year, the river overflows to cover a good 20 feet or so of the meadow, and it's kind of marshy, so just from a logistics standpoint, I'm not sure how stable the ground is unless you build it up. And I echo what everyone else said about the history of the land as well. Several of the metal detectors have come and shared their finds with us, and they've found 1,700 coins, and I think several of them have brought them to the Historical Society to donate them or to be documented. So it's a, it's a real treasure as it is now, in a living piece of land. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sukhathosaraka. I'm from Four Nadia's Way. I'm not a good speaker, by the way, so pardon my, the way I come across, but I'm going to talk my heart out, that's why I'm here. This is our first house that we, my family and I built, a lot of emotions behind it. Our first, second two-year son was born in this house. There's a lot of emotions behind it. And there are reasons why we have parental control, there are reasons why we don't show them things we don't want them to know about, like horror movies or death, right? The last thing we want is my two-year son to learn about death before they learn about happiness. So with that thought, I would want to encourage the council members to consider, lots of times we think to our mind on what is right, but do we feel it is right? So in this case, please consider whether you feel is the right thing to do, whether it's the right, if you think it's the right thing to do. With that, I would appreciate the council member's consideration. I'm sure we came here with a lot of hope, and you will give the due consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Shreed Ampartak, and I'm here with my wife, Urvi. We are from Twelve Nadia's Way. First of all, thank you all for coming, all my neighborhood friends, you know, I want to echo what they said. We just moved two months ago, three months ago, and, you know, as we were looking for the house, and Farmington was our first choice as far as the town, and we did a lot of research. We had called the town office and did the due diligence like my fellow neighbor did, and we were told that this is open space with the possibility of recreational area. We had looked at it, and we had done all the homework, and we, but two days ago, when we got this news, we were just shocked, that, you know, we, after so much homework and so much, you know, research and getting it right, now we are learning that something that we would have never bought, our property, in that kind of area. So I would kindly request all the council members to reconsider, you know, give a respect to community, respect to our neighborhood, and please reconsider your, you know, idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Monique Nado. I also don't have anything formally prepared, but I live at Eight Old Canal Crossing. And I actually bought that house 18 years ago, which is shocking, that it's been that long. But I knew I wanted to live in Farmington, and I actually searched over a year and probably looked at over 100 houses. And one of the reasons that I chose Old Canal Crossing was because of that beautiful piece of land that is right behind me. And at the time, I didn't have any children. I now have two children that play out there. We walk across to Nadia's Way to go to friends' house, we trick or treat, you know. It just would be such a huge detriment to turn that area into a cemetery. I think that it would just, it would just be seriously depressing, and I love my house and I love the location so much, we actually renovated our home instead of moving a year and a half ago. And if that piece of property were to turn into a cemetery, like And if that piece of property were to turn into a cemetery like the Drake's, we would probably be forced to move. And we own a business in town, and it just -- it just would be a bad idea, a very bad idea. So please, consider another area that doesn't affect so many homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Urvi Pathak. I'm from 12 Nadia's Way. I also haven't prepared, but I have heard my all neighbors and their emotional talks. We moved, as my husband said, we moved like three months ago. We found this neighborhood happy, family-oriented, and very safe for our girls. And I would like to request here to consider your ideas because to keep this area safe, happy, and joyful as it is, and another point is, respect the donor's idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brenda Drake. I'm at 18 Old Canal Crossing. And as my husband Jim said, we abut quite a bit of the property, probably more than anybody else here, except for on Nadia's Way, they have the front, we have the back area. Everybody -- I can agree with everything everyone has said, but there is one point that for someone who has lived here for a long time, like Glenn, we've already been subject to the soccer fields and the lights that we have to listen to through the summer in our backyards. Because on the other side of this, what's it called, Scott Swamp, they've put in all sorts of activities going on. We put up with it, but does it affect our property value? Yes. So this would be a second effect on our property value. And I think that should be considered in the whole scheme of everything. How much do you want to keep affecting property value of people that are coming into the community? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Renahan. We live at 27 Main Street. My wife Kristen and I moved here with our three kids in March of 2016. I'm on the Farmington Village Center Committee with Nancy, with Bruce. And I just thought I'd share a few insights from my experience being on that committee over the last three months. Number one, and this is a testament to the town, like, the engagement of townspeople across Farmington, whether you live on -- in Unionville, Nadia Way, the village, that differentiates our town from a lot of other towns. So that commitment has really stood out to me. On the Village Center Committee, you know, a lot of foundation has already been laid by townspeople in engagement for years. When you read back to reports that were shared by Bill and Kathy from 2015, the high level of engagement is critical to encourage you all on the Town Council to make the right decision. Another huge insight I've had the last three months is the effort of Bill and Kathy. You know, being a volunteer or a paid towns person, it is not a glamorous job. You guys are here for hours upon hours. And I guess I'd like to say that I've appreciated the fact that being on the committee, I've been able to grill you with question after question, and the rest of the committee has done the same, and your patience has been appreciated. The other thing I've really liked is the transparency. And specifically, what you're voting on tonight is a resolution to approve the town manager to go ahead with the process to look at the acquisition of the Parsons property. And the Parsons property is a property right when you drive into town. I think it is a, you know, in our committee, our committee voted unanimously to support this. There was a lot of questions and a lot of discussion and a lot of answers provided. So I just encourage you all to vote in favor of that resolution. And then finally, again, the thing that has impressed me most about Farmington and is shown tonight by my fellow neighbors, is that we are all stewards for this town. And like when Farmington was founded hundreds of years ago, you know, we need to think about our kids, the next generation. We all have that responsibility of stewards. So whether it be advocates for open space or advocates for doing the right thing with development, it's all of our jobs. So I just want to thank you all for the time that you give and for voting yes for the resolution. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Karina Smith, and I'm from 35 Hunter's Ridge. I'm here to address a serious safety concern at 8 Hunter's Ridge. I understand that the Town Council is in the process of developing a grass ordinance. And I think it's important to develop a thoughtful policy on grass maintenance for occupied properties. My concern is specifically with the town right-of-way located in front of 8 Hunter's Ridge. There have been multiple shrubs installed in the town right-of-way, and this blocks the line of sight for drivers. I'm concerned that a driver would be unable to see a child in a sidewalk who might step into the roadway. I did some research and did see that under Chapter 148, the right-of-way, Chapter 148 does say that enhancements or changes to the right-of-way without permission is prohibited. And it is my opinion that the installation of these shrubs and the lack of maintenance thereof has violated that ordinance. And so I'm asking that while the Town Council considers a grass maintenance program to immediately address a safety concern which affects children in the area. I did prepare some photos with notes on different issues, including blocking the sidewalk, blocking the roadway for cars coming down the road when you're driving up the street, as well as the fact that the town of Farmington does currently maintain the right-of-way up to the property line at 8 Hunter's Ridge by mowing the area short. So I feel that that is the proper way to maintain the area. It does lead into the Rails to Trails entrance, and it is heavily used by kids in the neighborhood. And so I'd like to continue that same mowing all the way up so that we can clearly see children in the sidewalk and avoid an accident. So I'll hand photos in, if that's okay?
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Right down here, if you'd like. Thank you.
My name is Amanda Strauss, and I live at 16 Townsend Road. I'd like to discuss the acquisition of the Parsons project, Parsons Land, excuse me. I think at this point in time, it is a bit premature to decide whether or not the town should purchase the Parsons property. I think before discussing whether or not to purchase the Parsons property, whether or not it's in the best interest of everybody in town, whether or not you purchase the Parsons property, you should look at performing the traffic studies as well as the environmental study, and then move forward with whether or not the town purchases the traffic, excuse me, purchases the Parsons property. I think before you do anything else, you need to decide or look at what the traffic impact was of going to the one lane in to town and what that traffic impact was on Waterville Road, Talcott Road, all the other High Street. You have changed all of the traffic patterns. Currently, the state is in no rush. They are not selling the property to anybody else. They are not looking to divest the property. There is time to do all of this. They are not moving forward with anything with that property before the town. And I think that the idea that there seems to be this rush on the town's part to acquire the property before doing anything with this seems to be a bit baffling. So I would urge you to just simply begin the process with all of these other studies on the part of, on the part of the townspeople, on the part of all of the townspeople, because it doesn't just affect those people who work and live in the village. It also affects the Highlands, Devonwood, a lot of the other constituents and taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you all for coming tonight and sharing your concerns. Next, we have reading of the minutes.
I move to approve September 11, 2018, regular Town Council meeting minutes.
Second.
Any corrections or changes?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Two changes. On the first page, it's marked that Edward is absent. He was not absent from that meeting. I think it might be a carryover from the prior meeting. The other comment is on page six, about two-thirds of the way down. My name's reversed. It should be Boy Williams. It's written as Williams Boy.
Anything else?
Madam Chair. I don't have the page number, and I apologize, Paula, but in my update regarding the Farmington Village Center Committee, there's -- we refer to the charrettes process, and that's spelt with two Rs. It's spelt with one R, so it's a common mistake, but I just wanted to make sure that's corrected because it's a process.
Okay. Any -- all those in favor, as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. September 25.
I move to approve September 25, 2018, regular Town Council meeting minutes.
Second.
Any corrections or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Reading of Communications. Kathy.
You just have the two pieces of communication that I had in your packets.
Any questions? Report of Committees. The Yukon Committee. We're actually meeting next Friday, 19?
I think so. Yeah, we're definitely meeting this month.
Friday at noon.
Yeah.
Right here in the Town Hall. Land Acquisition.
Letters, the town, sorry, the Land Acquisition Committee sent out letters to town residents who have property that's listed on the land acquisition list to find out if they were, if they have any interest in selling their property and to keep the town in mind if they do. I can say I did hear back from one person who just asked what was it about, but they went out mid-September, so we'll see if we get any more responses from that. There is no meeting in October. Our next meeting is November 8 at 5:00 p.m. in Town Hall.
Thank you. Green Efforts.
Green Efforts met last week. Our next meeting is November 15. It's a Thursday, so it's not our usual meeting date. We are forming -- at last meeting, I updated the town that we are focusing on waste reduction as a green efforts priority throughout town. We decided to form a subcommittee to create a list of tasks and how we can encourage businesses, including restaurants and retail, as well as maybe later on, schools and residents for waste reduction issues. And we have also started a blog, and the blog posts are only -- it's only being posted probably once every two to three months, but all the posts are available on Explore Farmington, which is, if you're not familiar with the site, it's a great way to stay up to date on town issues. You can find it on Facebook. But the most recent blog post was about invasive species and how you can manage them in your landscaping.
Thank you. FHS Ad-Hoc Committee and Survey. Community Survey Committee, excuse me.
Long title for our committee. So the Survey Ad-Hoc, I'll shorten it, is moving right along. We have a final draft of the survey questions. There've been, we've been working very hard over the past several weeks over finalizing the questions. We've had comments from the public. Also, members of the Facility and Finance Ad-Hoc Committee have given their feedback. And so we're in final draft right now that's being finalized with the consultant. It's approximately 40 questions, which should be about a 10-minute survey. It's going to be conducted over the phone with a random sample of 400 residents. So the pre-test is happening very soon, this weekend, the 13th and the 14th, and the full survey is rolling out between the 15th and the 26th of October. And we're looking at a presentation on the results as early as November 1st by the consultant to the Ad-Hoc Committee. And then we have some later dates in November, mid-November, to look at those results with the Facility and Finance Ad-Hoc Committee as well. And we'll be giving more updates to the council and to the public as the months go on.
Thank you. The Facility and Finance Ad-Hoc Committee.
Sure. So first, I'd like to thank for helping allow us to collaborate and an opportunity for the members of my committee to offer some feedback on the questions that her committee has come up with for the community survey. We've also completed a, we met last month, and we also completed a working financial model of the next, that the next FHS Building Committee will be able to utilize to explore different options for financing an FHS building project. Our next meeting is Tuesday, October 16. We'll continue to work on a couple of documents regarding the statement of needs for FHS. The Board of Education is reviewing those documents, and we'll provide feedback at our next meeting. We also plan on hearing from a person who is deeply involved in the Guilford Public School Building Committee. So this will give us an opportunity to ask what went well in their process, what was a challenge, what they might do differently if they had the opportunity to do it again. Also, the town and Board of Ed will walk us through the alternative plans for the FHS that the previous FHS Building Committee came up with. So we'll be able to walk through those different plans and hear about that as well. And we also look forward to hearing the results from the Community Survey Committee, the results that are expected in November. Thank you.
Thank you. The Farmington Village Center Committee.
Yes. We met, and we actually have a resolution on our desk, so I'm sure we'll go through that when we make that motion. Our next meeting for the Farmington Village Center Committee is October 11. We have two meetings. On October 11, we have a Quality of Life meeting that starts at 5:00 p.m. And then, right after that meeting, we have a 7:00 meeting that is for the Farmington Village Center, which we will give an update for folks that haven't had the time to attend the 5:00 meeting. So you won't miss out of anything. So that's our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Report of the Council Chair and Liaisons. I just want to emphasize, and I know it was in the newsletter as well, that you will, there will be calls out in the community for the survey. So people should be aware of that and just be ready for that. About 400 people, as Beth said, will be surveyed, but we can't say that enough. Be ready. October 15 to the 20th, I believe, so. Two. Board of Education.
So the Board of Education's last meeting was held on October 1 at East Farm School. The highlight was a presentation by Renee St. Hilaire, their principal, and four fourth graders, along with their teacher, on co-creating the curriculum, just basically allowing students to have some choice in use of materials and choose their areas of interest in writing, reading, and coming up with a project. And they've seen an increase in enthusiasm, motivation, and it really adds meaning to the students' projects. So it was really great to have them. They just led the discussion and the presentation, as we see in a lot of the schools. They did a great job. The state assessment, the standardized testing results have come in. That's the Smarter Balanced Assessment, which is given grades three through eighth district-wide. Farmington Public School students are continuing to meet and exceed in a high percentage on the state standards. About 70% to 85% of the students in math and English Language Arts or literacy are making those percentages, so with a very strong showing there. And the districts now can also see from their state results, student growth. So they're really excited, the administration and teachers, about using that information to help address things that need to be changed with the classroom instruction or curriculum. There's also a presentation on English Language Learner There's also a presentation on English Language Learners and Programming in town, and I thought it was interesting to note that there are 27 languages in Farmington that are spoken by students as their primary language, and that increases just about every year, and it shows our diversity. There are over 700 students with primary languages other than English in our district. The district's working hard to work with these students, obviously, but also coordinating programs for families to welcome them and give them tips on reading report cards and how school works and how the school day works and expectations in that area, so that's something new. And the Board of Education next meets on October 15th at 7:00 p.m. in the Farmington High School Library.
Okay. Thank you. Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber has two items on their calendar. This Saturday, the Coder School is having a grand opening from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m., and they have a meet and greet for all the local candidates for office that will be coming up at 7:00 p.m. on October 24th.
At the Coder School?
No, the opening is the Coder School. The Chamber is going to have that at Farmington Gardens.
At Farmington Gardens. Thank you. Economic Development.
The EDC held their quarterly Business Breakfast on September 26th, featuring Dr. James Lombella, President of Toxess and Esnun Tuck Community College. Dr. Lombella did a great job talking about manufacturing jobs in Connecticut and how the industry has evolved in modern times, and the event was attended by many and was a great success. The EDC will also be hosting a Free Fall Business Resource Seminar on October 16th from 8:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. at the Farmington Main Library. The keynote speaker will be Jag Dalal, who is a world-renowned authority and coveted speaker on management strategies, technology, and outsourcing. Jag is viewed as a futurist with a view towards surviving the changing world. He has been interviewed and quoted by The Wall Street Journal, Fortune, Time Magazine, Newsweek, Financial Times, Times of India, South China Morning Post, as well as CBS News and NPR. Thank you.
Thank you. Farmington Historic District.
Nothing new to report.
Housing Authority.
Housing Authority meets tomorrow.
Human Relations.
Human Relations met on September 26th at New Horizons Village in Unionville, and there were several New Horizons residents in attendance. The major point of discussion was the upcoming Route 177 and the bridge construction project in Unionville, and there was a lot of discussion with Matt Walsh from Town Hall regarding accessibility issues and possible problems and concerns during the construction, mainly for residents at New Horizons, but they were assured that Matt's been working very hard with the state to make that go as smoothly as possible for pedestrians and people with limited mobility. Human Relations meets next on November 28th at 6:30 p.m. in the Senior Community Center.
Thank you. Library Board.
Jay Johnston has announced his retirement as Executive Director of the Farmington Public Library. Over the years, Jay has just done a fantastic job to really help redefine what a public library is with things such as the Makerspace, that's like 3D printing, the Studio, which has like 3D interactive things for children and adults, as well as virtual reality, and various events that they've organized for children and adults, so he'll be greatly missed, and the effective date of when he's retiring is January 4th, 2019, so I'll keep you guys up to date in regards to progress to find a successor.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Jay will be greatly missed, and I'm sure they'll have a retirement party, so we'll have to keep posted on that for everyone. Town Planning and Zoning.
Yes, just a few updates. The construction of Five Corners Commercial Property on Birdside and Route 6, I think everyone realizes that building is going up, and it's good to hear that the building is fully leased, so that's making good progress there. The former Apricots Building that was purchased by Wooden Tap on 1593 Farmington Avenue, I'm sure a lot of people have driven by there. There's a lot of construction being done from what was discussed. The demo is completed, and new construction is in progress, so some nice work happening over there. And then, the Medical Office Building on 599 Farmington Avenue, that's the corner of Farmington Avenue, and when you get off of 84, obviously, a lot of steel beams are up. That's being completed, and that building is completely leased, and that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Unionville Historic District.
The Unionville Historic District Commission held their Unionville Historic House Tour on September 30th, and it was a great success. The highlighted historic houses on the tour included the Daniel Johnson House, built in 1844, the Frank Sanford House, also built in 1884, the George and Edward Thompson House, 1884, and the Norman Gridley House of 1889. Everyone on the Historic District Commission did a great job in helping organize and facilitate the tour, and there were people from Unionville, Farmington, as well as from other towns that attended the event. And Lisa Johnson in particular gave a really excellent -- she was kind of leading the tour and did a really excellent job in not just bringing us around to the different parts of the Historic District, but really giving you like the experience of what it would have been like in the late 1800s, early 1900s, what the things you would see, the things you would hear, the things you would smell, like really gave you the full experience of what it was like to be in Unionville in those times. So, it was a great success, and I think everybody will look forward to another event like that in the future. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. UVIA.
Nothing to report.
WPCA, Water Pollution Control.
Russell Arnold briefed us on the Avon and Burlington Sewer Agreement status reports. Specifically, he got into some of the details about how we are in continued discussion with both Avon and Burlington regarding the continuing talks regarding these agreements. In other news, the sewage treatment plant construction is still on target and proceeding on budget and on schedule.
Great to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other liaison, yes?
Madam Chair, for inland wetlands and the Conservation Commission, I just want to piggyback on one of Bruce's comments about Wooden Tap going into the old Apricot space. That development also had to go through inland wetlands, and they had to get some approvals related to flood zone areas in relation to the river, and that was approved last month by the commission. They made some changes to their plans in order to account for some concerns regarding flooding. The other item to point out is that there've been a couple of issues where residents are surprised that their backyards are wetlands, and then they decide to do some work, clear some trees, work that the normal homeowner would believe is permitted because they own the property, unfortunately. For wetlands, that's not always the case. So, there was a notice in the town's newsletter that everyone should have received last week. Is that when they went out? Reminding you that if you do have a traditionally wet backyard before you try to do any significant clearing or any filling work, you should probably contact Town Hall in order to avoid a fine associated with doing work that you're not allowed to do.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Okay. Report of the Town Manager, Kathy.
You have the report in front of you. It is quite large with the quarterly reports. Maybe we can go through a couple of the items. Maybe we can start with the expansion of the Riverside Cemetery. So, as you know and what we heard tonight, Nancy and I met with the Riverside Cemetery Committee to talk about the Tinty property, and as we discussed at the last meeting, the Tinty property was not a piece of property that we had considered before, so the first step was to see if the cemetery people had any interest in that property. When we did meet with them, they did have an interest in it. Obviously, tonight, when we've heard from the residents here, they are not happy with that site, so there is, you know, we're at the first, very first stages of it. There's a deed, there's questions about what we can do legally, what we could do, what we should do or not do, whether it's legal or not legal. We have not vetted this really at all. You know, the first step was just to talk to the cemetery people, and that's what we've done, and reporting back that they were happy with it. I don't know right now if you would like me, you know, the lawyers haven't looked at the deed, and again, about what Mr. Tinty's intent was, what, you know, for a cemetery. I know I've never had a discussion with him about a cemetery. I do know that he did what some of the neighbors have described about the wildlife and the park and things like that were absolutely his intent, were definitely his intent. I do know that when we talked about recreation, that was, the town had a lot of interest in making that recreation, and we worked with Mr. Tinty because my conversations with him, that probably wouldn't have been his first priority, meaning like recreation fields, but that was part that what we really wanted at that time, so he agreed to that, that recreation types of fields, but his bigger intent, my thought was, was, you know, more of the walking in the river and some of that, which was described by the neighbors, and I think that definitely is an accurate type of statement, you know. But, so that's where we are, where we're at, so again, I can just do some basic due diligence, if you'd like me to, just about the deed and some of these different things, or I'll look for guidance from you all.
CJ.
I would say, in light of the comments, certainly some due diligence. Look at what the documents are. If it indeed excludes a cemetery, that kind of ends the discussion right there.
Yep.
So, why don't we do some research before we discuss it further, but keeping in light the, let's see, 13 different people who came up and so eloquently discussed their feelings on this.
No, and I think, I mean, from my reaction, like, I think one of the things that I think is good to know in hearing from the public, that it was part, and a lot of people mentioned it, about being recreation, and that if that's something that's, you know, I wasn't sure people would like recreation less or more than a cemetery, so obviously, hearing people say that recreation seems okay, and that's good to know, too, and getting input about that, so I'll look at the deed and look, see what the attorneys say, and review some of the documents from the council minutes and things of that nature when we got the, when we were given the property. I can do that next.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, that we look into that. We're at the beginning stages right now, as is the Cemetery Committee, and we went away both looking at doing our due diligence into what really was, it was all about, so I would certainly say, in light of all the conversations tonight, we should certainly make sure and look into that before we do anything else. So, I would agree totally with CJ, and if everybody's in agreement with that, we'll do our due diligence and see where we're at and what else can be done.
And if, and just if someone would just leave, like, if you guys have like one-person contact, if you want to leave it with Erica, my assistant, and I'll make sure that when the council talks about it on any of the managers' reports, we'll let someone know by email that it's coming up on agenda, so just to keep you in the loop. So, if you just leave a contact with Erica, my assistant, I'll just make sure that you guys are aware that when it comes back up for any type of discussion.
And there are a lot of issues that you brought up tonight, and as I said earlier, our discussion, we don't have that discussion, but we're certainly would address all of those kinds of things, which we need to look into, so that's what I would suggest.
I do want to say also, as Spin said, it's great to have people come and give us kind of what we may not have known otherwise and feedback. I know you took time from your families and probably work and other things to get here, but it really gives us the information that we need to make a good decision. But I'm also wondering, I know it's preliminary insofar as running it by the town attorneys, but I'm also wondering if that is a good use of resources when we have another list of properties, and we've heard kind of loud and clear from this community. I wonder if it would be a better use to have kind of next in line or really have town attorneys look at something that's a little more maybe feasible or open to the community. And I know we don't know what that is yet, but like, we brought this up as a priority. Maybe it's, and it goes down on the list at this point, because I know that town attorneys are going to, you know, charge the town, and it's everyone's time and effort, but I'm wondering if it should.
Well, I think it would kind of put it to rest. If that's absolutely something that's there, then for future councils, we'd have, we'd have a decision.
Well, how about, how about before we send it to the town attorney, let me make sure, I'll pull the minutes, the deeds, I'll go through it in detail and see, and then come back and see. It may be something is simple. I may come back with a recommendation that just feels that it's inappropriate, and again, then the question would be, again, whether or not it's legal for us to do it based on the deed, whether, whether we chose to, but whether it's legal, and so let me look it through all that and actually go through the minutes and some of the things at the public hearings and some of that. I haven't done any of that, so let me do that first, and then before we send it to the town attorney and spend money, and maybe we can just see where we go from there. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy.
Just going through the report on the blocking of the box, I think Patty, you may, I think you asked the questioning on it, and I hope this answered it, the question for you. You know, the Town's Traffic Review Board is evaluating whether we want to do an ordinance and do that. It's, the question is, is that whether it would be, our foreign enforcement efforts would be better served in other places instead of like on traffic, on the blocking of the box. So, they're still looking at it. You know, one of the things that is a concern is that it does somewhat make the roadway ugly, depending on where it is, and so, again, you don't have to put it in every area you do. Then the question is, is that when you do put it there, and then when people do block the box, how many complaints do we actually get about it? And then you don't see a police car there, and then we're putting our cars and they'll block the box instead of in the neighborhoods, so these are some of the things that they've kind of been vetting. So, unless you guys really feel strongly about it, I think this is something kind of on the back burner, our feeling is at this point in time, but again.
What, how, what are they doing to evaluate it? Because my, the reason why I thought about this is because frankly, and not that Facebook is the best way to make your voice heard in a public community, but a lot of the people are upset about traffic, and to me, blocking the box is a relatively comparatively inexpensive. There are costs involved with signage and with painting and obviously with officer time, but in terms of fixing some of the traffic issues, I myself have been stuck when people say, "I'm going through on this yellow light, and now I'm going to block the intersection for the next two changes of the light." So, what are they doing to evaluate what the?
Well, a couple of things is that when they look at where they get their traffic complaints, and again, not everyone calls to complain, so they have a vision. A lot of the blocking the box is, like, I'll give an example, and it wrote here, you can't ticket for it, like, we get a huge amount, is that if you're making a turn and you're blocking the box, that's not considered a block the box. So, again, where you see it is on the 84 intersection. We see that. Now, again, with coming in, the traffic has improved, so they want to look at that a little bit more about whether or not, how many times people are actually, now that the traffic's improved a little bit, are they blocking the box? They're also looking at some of the intersections to see how often it's happening, but again, it goes to expectation when you say about people are, the more complaints that I hear about the traffic is about the speeding in the neighborhoods and that type of thing, and that whether you would prefer to have your police officer in the neighborhoods doing traffic and radar versus a block the box on 84 on the interstate. And again, I think that that's what they're kind of just vetting right now, that kind of analysis, because again, it's just really more about the resources, about where your police are going to be and where your complaints are, and how many complaints are coming from more of the neighborhoods, and would it solve any real traffic problems about blocking the box? Because again, you're ticketing people, but is that really helping the overall traffic? I'm not sure, maybe it is or not, you know, I'm not sure it really is, but that's what they're looking at.
That's helpful to hear. If they have any insight after they've done that, I'd like to hear it.
Okay, sure. On good news, we did receive that SAFER grant for our additional full-time firefighter, so we applied for it, and it was almost, I think, like a couple of days after the meeting, last meeting, we did hear that, we did hear from the federal government, and we received the grant, so it's $15,000 it's going to cost us in year one, and the federal government is picking up the rest of the firefighter, so that has us have the ninth firefighter. So, Steve Hoffman and our volunteer fire chief supplied and got this grant for us, so we're very pleased about that. Veterans Day is November 1st, and we usually have a ceremony in front of the Town Hall at 11:00 a.m., so if anyone would like to go, please come at 11:00 o'clock on November 11th.
November 11th.
We did have a West District Neighborhood Meeting, again, talking about some traffic issues. There was approximately 15 residents in attendance, and they had some conversations with the residents. One of the things that I thought was very beneficial is that the West District School Principal was also there, and I think that was really very good that she was there because some of the issues were directly related to kids walking to school and school buses, so I just wanted to highlight that. Again, we do have a really good collaboration between our school systems and our police department, and it goes layers, you know, from the principals and to the chief. and it goes layers, you know, from the principals and to the chiefs and to our traffic officer. And so I, I've heard pretty good reviews about our West District meeting, and I think we're gonna probably, the chief and the review board is gonna go to a couple of other neighborhoods that we've had some comments about.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, sure.
Kathy, unfortunately I couldn't, I am a West District neighborhood family, but unfortunately I had a green efforts meeting that night, so I could not attend. But several of my neighbors did, and my husband as well. And I want to say that I also heard good things about the meeting. They thought it was productive. They really appreciated Kelly Sanders really taking a lot of information back, because I know a lot of the concern is students walking to school. And they also, I heard that they appreciated that it seemed that Chief Melanson was really paying attention to what was being said and taking notes. And they appreciated having their voices heard. So, thank you.
The other item is the overgrowth ordinance, and a resident today spoke about that a little bit. And you can see in my report that we have been receiving, I think part of it is a lot of rain this season, but just a really a lot of complaints about overgrowth of vegetation on personal property. And we don't have an ordinance related to overgrowth or a grass ordinance, and you know we have a blight ordinance, but it's for vacant property. But I, you know, I've somewhat have pushed back about a grass ordinance in the past because of the enforcement and how you would do it, and what would be the length of the lawn, and would we have to open up our vacant blight ordinance and some different things. But with working with the planner and our zoning enforcement officer and our police, it really has become more and more difficult when there's no law at all. And the amount of time that we have to spend trying to enforce something when there's really no law, and it's, it is again, going back to a quality of life issue for some of these neighborhoods, where the lawns, and it's not just the grass, it's really just an overgrowth. And we're in the process of updating our housing code, and some municipalities in the housing code have something, some have grass ordinances, but mine is, we're looking at more of like an overgrowth, because I really don't want to get in the business of your lawn is this tall versus this tall. It's more about just an overall picture of just overgrowth of your property that is. So we're working on that. And based on the resident that came today, we do have on, you know, our right of way, that, like, again, some of it's more on like zoning, where there's open space in between different properties, and that we own that, and that people aren't supposed to plant on open space and do things. But it does say that we do have, you know, some certain rights, because it is our property. But that's a sticky issue too, because, you know, you're talking about, like, just imagine your own property, the grass at the end. I mean, that is our property, the town. We have the right of way on it. And we don't historically go on people's property and mow their lawns, or take off stuff off their own property. And it's a difficult issue on Hunter's Ridge, because it's a sidewalk, it's the lawn, the sidewalk, and then the grass area there. And people consider that their own property, even though really we have a right of way. And to actually have town people go on someone's personal property, which they think is their personal property, and mow it, and then lean their property, is, is a real sticky issue. It's, you know, it's not something that we really would, I'd be encouraging. I am gonna look and make sure about the safety issues. We did have contacted the neighbor saying that they have to cut back some different things. But I think the better approach is to get a law in place that then we have enforcement abilities. And something like an overgrowth ordinance, I think would be helpful to start looking into. So, and it, and I think the zoning enforcement person, they have said that they feel that it's time, it's time that they, that you just, we can't have meeting after meeting trying to fix problems in neighborhoods where we have no law to fix it. And it's, it's a handful, it's a handful of properties, and I don't think we're gonna be running around being the grass police, but I think it will be helpful for us to have something on the books. So I'm looking at doing that, and the housing ordinance is almost done. And it would be a public, a public hearing, and it would just be a section, it would be a part of it. And we're really trying to have it broad, broadly based. And we're gonna try to not reinvent the wheel and look at what other towns do and try to have that in. So if, unless there's some real pushback on your end, I thought that we continue to work through the process, and it would be part of the public hearings, and the public would have a chance to comment on it, and we describe what it would be later on in the next few months.
Yeah, my, one of my thoughts was just, you mentioned, was to look at other towns and see, which you usually do, see what's out there, and to do something so that we can address those kinds of needs. So, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, and I think that that would be great too. I would be curious to see what other towns do, because I can just envision that, that section of lawn, that it's really the right of way, that someone decides to put wildflowers on it and just let it grow, like, does other towns deal with that? So it's interesting just to see what other communities, how they deal with that, and what should be there.
Right, right. And a lot of communities do have like a grass type of ordinance, and it's really complaint-based, and it's about, based on how long your grass gets. And a lot of it is, just depends, you know, some people, having some tall grass or some wildflowers may not bother. Like I said, I don't really want to be in the business of doing that. But again, if you see something, you say, look, it's more overgrowth, where it's really just all over the property. It's not that you missed mowing your lawn one week, and then all of a sudden you come out. But it's, it's sticky when you're, when you're regulating people's private property. So that, and that's why, again, with this Hunter's Ridge one, it's a difficult issue to start going out on someone's property and leaning them, where, you know, again, it's a stripway. But I will look at some of the safety things to see if we can get them to cut back even more of it. But there is a bush planted on there, on the thing that shouldn't be there. And, you know, we have, again, written letters and begged, pleaded, asked to remove things and cut back, and they haven't done it. And usually the only way you can have someone do that is if you start fining them, or you go, the townspeople go on it. And we really have not used that on, I can't even tell you the last time we've done something like that, where we've gone on personal property with our, our, our people.
Do you envision that this ordinance would also comply with residents that live on state roads?
Yeah.
It would?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll let Kathy look into that course and continue.
And then the quarterly reports, you have the whole list of quarterly reports, and so you have our goals, and then some backup information. And I don't, I'm not gonna go through it in detail, if, I'm sure you all read it, and if you have any specific questions. But I will say that we're moving along quite a bit on a lot of our goals, and I think we're making great progress. And hopefully you can see that by the backup information, and you guys know it, because you're going to all the committee meetings and knowing what's happening. And I think there's been quite a bit of progress, and we've only established these goals in, I think, whenever they were amended, but it wasn't too long ago. And so I don't know if you have any other questions.
Any questions? CJ.
Just a comment. Going through the list of the goals and the red on our list, I don't know where they have copies in the back, is everything that has been done. We do have a number of committees that all of us sit on, but it's really the town staff and the town manager who are doing all the long hours of work preparing for these meetings, getting us, so we have all the information that's in front of us when we get to these meetings. And I believe we're creating another committee tonight. So I just want to thank the staff and the town manager for doing a great job in keeping us all on track.
Thanks. Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the town manager's report?
I move to approve the town manager's report.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, appointments.
Yes, Madam Chair. Item L3, I move that Inez St. James be appointed to the Conservation Inland and Wetland Commission for a balance of four years, beginning immediately and ending September 30th of 2020.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Item L5, I move that Stacy Petzozella be appointed to the Green Effort Committee for an indefinite term, beginning immediately.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
I move that John DeMayo be appointed to the Housing Authority for a balance of five years term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th of 2023.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Item number L7, I move that Dietra Erardi, and just a correction on the agenda document, it's spelt I-E-R-A-R-D-I, be appointed to the Human Relation Commission for a balance of two years term, beginning immediately and ending June 30th of 2019.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Madam Chair, L10, I move that Harry Marsh be appointed to the North Central Regional Mental Health Board, Inc., for a balance of two years, beginning immediately and ending September 30th of 2019.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
L14, I move that Robert Hewland be appointed to the Retirement Board for the balance of two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January of 2020.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Madam Chair, L16, I move that Lisa Johnson be appointed to the Unionville Historic District and Property Commission for a balance of five years term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th of 2023.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Oh, the justice of the piece?
Yeah.
No.
No, L8.
Got it.
Christine Murgathaler.
Murgathaler. Sorry. I move that Christine Murgathaler be appointed to the Human Relations Commission for the balance of a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And that's it. Thank you. Old business, new business.
Okay.
N.
Okay. I move to approve the following resolution, resolution to support the Town of Farmington's interests in acquisition, acquiring Parsons' property from the State of Connecticut, authorizing the town manager to begin the process with the State of Connecticut DOT.
Second.
Kathy? So you have the resolution in front of you, and please pick up the one that was at your places, and you can tell because it's in, there's red in it. So there was just, those are just two changes. We just changed the word to attendees in the one, two, three, four paragraph, and we just added some additional language about some liability in the, that paragraph that you see that has the red. Other than that, it's the same area. The committee, the Farmington Village Committee, has approved this unanimously. And I can just kind of walk through it for you, is that our goal was to establish a village committee, and that the town council approved the charge, which the committee will develop recommendations to the town council regarding the future use of the Parsons' property, including ownership control, use and use. Basically, our committee is working on the ownership part of it. And so at the September 17th Farmington Village Committee meeting, the committee recommended that based on the information available to the town at this time, ownership of the Parsons' property is in the best interest of the town, and that this recommendation was based on reviewing a comprehensive work and reports from the Gateway Committee, presentations from town staff, and the consensus of attendees at an extensively advertised and well-attended public meeting on September 4th. They also recommend that the town council begin the process of acquiring the property from the State of Connecticut, subject to a full environmental review, obtaining relief from liability to the state, and third parties from pre-existing contamination via the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, Municipal Brownfield Liability Relief Program, and other similar programs, and all other due diligence required. And that order to begin the process of acquiring the property from the State of Committee, State of Connecticut, the committee recommends that the town manager notify the State of Connecticut of Farmington's interest in the property, and that the town manager work with the town's consultant, a licensed environmental professional, to begin the process of an environmental investigation into the property, and that the town staff apply for available assessment funding to conduct environmental investigations of the property under the Department of Economic and Community Development, DECD Brownfield Grant Program, in which the applications are due at the end of the month. And lastly, that the Farmington Village Center Committee continue to carry out the additional charges assigned to it by the town council as stated in the charge of the committee, and report back to the town council on a regular basis. If the town council approves this resolution, my understanding of the next steps would be is that I would notify the Connecticut DOT of our interest in the property. We would request a meeting with the Transportation and Real Estate Acquisition Division. We would also recommend, request a meeting with the Community DECD and the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And then we would also be submitting an application for available assessment funding to conduct environmental investigations. So really, where we are right now, just as, if you are a homeowner or anyone, we're doing our due diligence, we're obviously not buying or acquiring a property until we find out all the information we need to find out about it. And the first thing we need to find out, one of the most important things, is the environmental aspect of it. And so we can't do that until we start the process. We did, as you know, our group hired an environmental expert that is gonna help us along this process, help us write the letter to the DOT, help us go to the meetings, help us make sure, read the reports. We're also gonna get involved, our regular attorney, Duncan, who has on his staff a very high-skilled environmental attorney, so they'll be involved in the process. And it's really, as we've discussed, Nancy and Bruce, with the committee, it's really one step at a time, one step at a time. But we, the committee felt strongly, and what we've heard from the public at the meetings, is that ownership is probably our best, is our best option. So that's what we're gonna aim for, but we have to do our homework and our due diligence and take it one step at a time. And so Nancy and Bruce, I don't know if I, that's where we are.
No, I, I completely agree. And when I, when I think about, and I know that someone from the public had talked about perhaps maybe, you know, doing an additional traffic study to understand the impacts, I, I would, you know, that would be part of our diligence as well as, as we move forward. I mean, we don't know if this is the best interests, if there's a huge environmental concern, we need to understand that first. And it costs money to start doing some of those other tests or, you know, traffic counts. So I know that we had a traffic count done recently. Do you, do you remember the, the year that it was done?
I, what bill you're in?
2015. Okay. So, you know, I, I think it is the best interest for us to, to move this forward. Like you said, Kathy, that it's, it's one step moving forward. We're not purchasing the property. We need to understand if there is an environmental issue and what that would cost to, to the town. So if we do purchase the property. And I think the next step would also be, is doing a traffic study and understanding the impacts of other parts of our community, based on the additional impact. If we do own the property and we do development, how does that impact the other parts of our?
Right. And you can't have any, what I mean, it's really, we say ownership, but really what the committee talked about a lot, it's more about control of the property.
Correct, yes.
Control of the property. And that's really what we want. We want control over the property. And then later on, depending on how things go, then use and traffic studies and all those different things. But if you don't have control of the property, you're just gonna have someone else dictating what's going to happen there. And that's something that I think the committee felt strongly, that we should have the control of the property, and we can debate some of the uses and some of the different things later on in the process. But obviously, we can't do anything until we know environmentally what's there and what the cleanup cost, and who's gonna clean it up. And that's why the grants too, that we want to apply for. It's gonna be a busy month for the staff going, getting all these meetings and getting a grant application in by the end of the month. But Farmington's never received a Brownfields grant, so we're hopeful that that would help us. But communities like us, sometimes we don't receive grants like that, but we haven't in the past, and it's really could be very much an economic development grant with the UConn Health Center around. So we're hopeful that maybe we could receive a grant for it.
And just to add, I-
Sure, yes.
Just, we were delighted that we had almost 100 people at a meeting. This room was full at our first meeting. And really, it was a very, very positive, very positive meeting. And people were very much in support of us, the town, having control. But all- But also, there were a lot of comments made about what do we have to do? And those are the things we don't know, as Kathy and Bruce both mentioned, environmental, and we don't know any of that yet. And that's what we're going to do now, is, is look, so with this resolution, we can move forward and do all of those things, to find out what the costs are going to be and what, what it means for the Town of Farmington. But without having that possibility of control, we can't really, um, think about that however we want to use that, that piece of property, so.
Right.
So it was very much in support, the people there at that meeting, and, um, so, and this is just to continue on.
Right, and just if anyone's, because we do have a bigger audience than we usually do today, if that, we do have on our webpage, it does, Farmington Village Committee, it has its own webpage, and the minutes and the meetings and some different things, questions and answers, so if anyone does have an interest after you've been here tonight, I encourage you to follow it on, online, and, uh, we are trying to really post any kinds of questions and answers and our progress as we go along.
Thank you.
Questions from the council or thoughts?
Just other comment, and I hope the, uh, different studies and reviews that you were discussing, uh, answers the public's questions and concerns about the property, that we're not going to do anything that is not in the best interest of the town, or if there's, uh, a large cost involved in owning this property. My biggest fear in not acting on this and not letting the state know our interest here is, although they may not currently have plans, that they act on plans and not give us that opportunity, because once we miss the opportunity to take control of this property, it's gone. And we don't know what the state may or may not do with it, so I think it really is important that we, uh, get control of the property.
Yes.
Um, I want to say that at this point, I am, I'm in favor of this resolution, because you can't move forward on the property, frankly, in my opinion, without knowing the due diligence that it's going to come up. And I do think, um, it's important to make sure that we fully evaluate the environmental issues, and also make sure that, um, as part of this, there's provisions to protect the town from its own, from liability for owning property that may be contaminated, because frankly, if it turns out that it is, but the town still wants it, we want to be able to control how that gets handled and how it gets done. So I'm in favor of conducting due diligence to move forward on this, to think about what the options are, because it is a valuable, valuable in an intrinsic sense as opposed to a monetary sense, a valuable piece of property in town.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Okay, then all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Great. N2.
I move to award a contract for the purchase of a 12, uh, purchase of 12 APX 6000 model 2.5 portable radio to Motorola Solution, Inc. of Marvell, Massachusetts, of a purchase price of $5,532.87 per radio.
Second.
This, uh, purchase of the motion is to contract with the vendor to supply portable radios to the police department. These radios will be assigned to the police supervisors and the police officers assigned to West Farms Mall. The radios will be interoperable with radio frequencies from surrounding towns and police departments. We only have, the police only have a limited number of radios with this ability. I'm sure you remember when the chief came during the capital budget, he talked about how important it was that you can talk to other police departments, and that's part of these radios. This is off the, the state of Connecticut master contract, so it is a low bid, and it is because it's over $50,000. The council has to approve it, and there is money in the capital budget for this.
Questions? Kathy?
Now, just a question, Kathy, because I did, and I think I ask this every time we're purchasing something. I did try to look in the budget to figure out where this falls in terms of what we budgeted for, and how much it really costs, and I couldn't match up the line item, so does this fall within the budget?
Let me joke.
Yes, it does. It's actually to be two sources, between the capital budget and the technology budget, and also, um, they have some money through a state grant, a public safety radio grant, so between the two, it will cover, we thought, but the original idea was to purchase 15, because of the price, we're only able to purchase 12. So it's, um, same within budget to purchase above.
Thank you. Other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, N3.
I move that the following appropriation transfers be made from, from and to accounts listed below in the fiscal year 2017 to 2018 general fund budget, um, and that's totaling of $93,970.
Second.
Kathy? So this is our year-end transfer that we have to do every year. I just thought I'd, I'd go through it, and then if you have any specific questions, we can talk about it. If you go to page two on the revenue side, um, the town collected, um, $1,488,931 over from the amount budgeted on the revenue side, and there is, um, examples of why that happened, the property taxes, the license and permits, the fines, the investment income, and things. I just wanted to talk about a couple of things about this budget year, because it was, it was definitely a different budget year. It wasn't the budget that you guys did, it was the year before, but I'm sure you remember there were a couple of things going on. The first thing was, is that the state did not approve their, their budget until, I think, was it November, Joe, that they did the budget, or?
Halloween.
Halloween, yeah, so first week. So the town was not, did not have a budget and state budget. The other thing was, is that if you remember, that the state was in, really in crisis mode with that, how much revenue they were going to give the state, I mean, the different towns. So the town really did not fund a lot of state funding, because we were very concerned about it. And you can see here with the education grants, you can see that we received $558,000. It's because we did not budget very much on education funding, because we did not think we were going to receive it. There were other things that also happened, um, that our building permits, the, the elderly, new elderly complex that's coming on Route 4, right across the, down the street from the town hall. Our building permit came in last year, so that was an extra $266,000. Our investment income was high, because our interest rates went up. So we did have a really great year on the revenue side of the budget, so that was one thing that happened. On the expenditure side of the budget, we also had a great year. And so for 1718, the expenditures totaled, which was $886,000 less than the amount budgeted. And that's really, really not usually how, what happens. But the reason why that did, again, going back to what I said earlier, is that because we didn't have a state budget from July, August, September, October, four full months, our, we basically had a freeze on our expenditure side of the budget, because we weren't sure what was going to happen. And if you do remember, there was a lot of communities that had to send out supplemental tax bills and various things, and we did not want to do that, obviously. So we held our expenditures down, um, for almost five months, um, because we weren't sure what we were going to do. So we almost, basically had a freeze for five months, and then held the expenditures almost the whole year, because we were uncertain about what the state funding was going to be. So, anyway, all of this is, you'd rather be on that side of the equation than the other side of the equation. But in summary, um, for fiscal year 1718, the general fund revenue exceeded budgeted amounts by $1,488,931, and expenditures were less than budgeted by 886,000, resulting in a positive result of operations of $2,375,008. With this amount added to the fund balance, it increases the general fund unassigned fund balance to $14,422,649, or 3.57 above the operating budget.
Questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, this is my first go-around on this side of the, the table through, um, this process, so I have a question, or maybe more than one question, about the process, and that is, so tonight, we're voting on, the motion is this first page, and what references the $93,970 funds transfer that you need to...
Yep.
...take care of, to balance things out among departments and different funds and departments.
Correct.
Um, but I, eventually, what will happen, or as a result of our vote tonight, it's my understanding that this revenue over expenses of 2.375 million dollars will then go to fund balance. That's, that's the way the charter's written, and that's the way the process works.
Correct.
Okay.
One of the things that I just want to, a couple of comments on, was that when we had our auditors come in last year, and when we were all sitting here, one of the things they're so concerned about is that our fund balance was low, and we actually changed our policy to increase our fund balance, the amount that we wanted to make sure was, was going to be, or we were going to strive to have between 12 and 15 percent, instead of the lower percentage we had. And I have to say, I mean, I was part of that budgeting year when we were very concerned about the deficit in the state, and how much we wouldn't get, or, you know, it was influx. And, um, I really commend Kathy and Joe for the work they do to make sure that Farmington isn't one of the communities that had to send out supplemental bills and all. And I remember the communities being, just people being beside themselves with all of a sudden getting a supplemental bill, and Farmington didn't have to do that. And, um, so I really commend them for the job they do in making sure that our community stays whole, and does year after year. And that said, the amount that we have, we're able to put into our fund balance, we're actually, um, increasing our fund balance to be more, I believe, more whole in the fund balance realm, where we were going to be between 12 and 15 percent. And that was one thing that our auditors said, that that was their concern. Everything else was good in our books, but our fund balance, they had hoped we would bring that up. And that is something that we want, I think is important to keep, maintain, and increase because of the, our AAA bonding as well, because that's something that's in jeopardy if we don't have a, a strong fund balance. It's one of the pieces, it's not all the pieces, but it is one. So, um, seeing this happen and, and having this go into our fund balance, I think is very positive, in that it has resulted in a very positive effect for Farmington, and it's, uh, just makes us that much more whole and much more, uh, have a, a greater fund balance, which is very important, so. And it's not typical, as Kathy said, that every year this would happen, but that was really a, a scary time with, with deficits, so.
Other comments?
Yeah, I certainly agree with your comments about the need to increase the fund balance, and, um, that was certainly something that we heard, um, with the auditor's review. I'm wondering, Kathy, what would be the impact if we postpone this vote tonight to the next meeting? I think not everyone was fully aware that all of that 2.375 million would go directly to the reserve, and potentially, there are other options we could explore, where we're putting a large amount into the reserve to get us into that 12 to 15 percent, but also maybe exploring, looking at setting, appropriating some of that money towards something, think, something that we know that we have to do, such as the Parson, um, you know, the Parsons property, assuming the environmental study and the traffic studies, uh, all come back favorably. Um, I was just wondering, what would be the impact of that, if we wanted to essentially postpone this, and could further explore those other options, to make sure that we're making the best decision for the town?
Joe, is there any, is there anything, if we waited on this option till the November meeting, if with the auditors and things of that, it's by charter?
I'm basically reconciling now with the auditors.
Joe, can you, yeah, could you go to the mic, please? Thank you.
Basically, we are at the point where the auditors are in, they started their audit today. If you don't, um, and, and technically, the books are officially closed, so if you don't do anything tonight, if you wait until November, one's going to delay the audit. So, I can't give them final financial statements, because the final action hasn't been taken by the council, so that will delay the audit. And if now you're talking November, we're probably not going to have our audit done in time for December 31st, which is state statute. So we do run into that, that consideration. Um, I would just, if, if you do have ideas where you want to use some of this money, there's no harm in letting this go to fund balance, you could always appropriate out of fund balance, um, at any time. There's no, um, law ordinance or anything saying you, you only can do it at a certain point in time. So if this does flow into fund balance, and it does bring the fund balance to the 13.6 percent, and you want to bring it down to 12 percent, or, or take, you know, take it out for projects, there is a provision in the town charter where you could actually appropriate funds, $200,000, up to $200,000 as purely on a town council action, $400,000 on a town council and town meeting action, anything over $400,000, town council, town meeting, and referendum action. So you do have some flexibility to, to appropriate from fund balance at that point. I would just be concerned about if you, if you don't approve this tonight, we are going to delay the audit, um, and it's really going to, you know, push everything back. So, if, if you want to use some of this money at some point in time, again, there's no reason why you can't go, you can't do that, there's no reason why you can't do that in November, or December, or, or any time that you want. I would just, you know, ask, I, actually, I would ask that you not delay this, so that we could close the books at this point.
And what if we, um, what if we didn't cancel the October 21st meeting and postponed it to take action at that time?
Um, again, that, that probably would, would be okay, it's just a matter of, um, the, the goal is to have the auditors out of here by a week from Friday, so I'm not sure where that falls in, into your next meeting, but, um, basically, they would, they would complete their fieldwork by a week from this coming Friday, so I'm not sure if that, where that ties into your, with the meeting you're talking about.
I guess what I'm getting at is, if we postponed and had a meeting October 23rd, would there be enough time to meet the December 31st deadline by state statute?
Probably would, I would, I would have to work it out with the auditors, um, because again, they would be wrapping up their fieldwork at that point, and we'd be, we would be going back in there and, and making adjustments. So I would have to work that out with them, but I, this type of a transaction probably would, would be okay, for that, if you went at that point, you know, October 23rd. Uh, if you go beyond that, like I said, if you went to your November meeting, it, it would definitely have problems with the audit, getting the audit complete.
Joe, the auditors were supposed to leave on, you said, a week from this Friday?
Right.
So that would be October 19th, so it would be a couple of days they'd have to stay, so October 23rd, so.
Right.
They could probably do that, right?
Other comments?
Yeah, I just want to touch on to what Edward was saying, and, and maybe, Joe, you can clarify. So if this was postponed to the second meeting in October, um, is there any additional time and resource that we would have to put to this, from your staff or the town staff, to comply with this? Like, is there any additional work by postponing it a week or two? A week and a half, I think it is.
There's no additional work, it, it, right now. What will happen is, depending upon what you do on the 23rd, if you go beyond what's on here, obviously, it, it does create some changes in, in the financial statements that we prepared for the auditors. So, we gave them financial statements that basically are complete, other than these transfers. So with the idea that we would go back with these transfers and, and, you know, $93,000 in transfers, but everything else is, is pretty much complete in the financial statements. So if you go beyond this, um, there, there would be additional financial statement prep that we would have to do, um, at that point, based on whatever you, you do. So, um, you know, again, that's how much of work that is, how much, what that entails, depending upon what you, what you actually do.
And, and I think, and, and I don't know if this is a question for you, Kathy, as I was listening to Nancy talk, and I remember the 12 percent range, 12 percent to 15 percent range, and I know you had shared with me just recently, and I'm not sure if this was a draft version of, um, the policy, if it's still draft, because there's, I don't know if I'm reading this right, because it says that by June 30th each year equal, that there's a 10 percent ensuring that there's...
Yeah, I read it today, yeah. What we did at the meeting, so it used to be a minimum of 8 percent, and then it went and then to targeted a maximum of 12 percent, so that's what happened, and then we bumped that from 10 to 15. So it used to be eight and aiming towards 12 percent, and then we went to a minimum of 10, and we're aiming towards 15 percent.
Got it, okay.
That's what we did, I read the minutes today.
Okay, thank you.
CJ?
Couple of things. First off, I think, uh, I would be in favor certainly of putting this in the fund balance, which would seem to follow our precedent, but most importantly, I think it would be flying in the face of a word we've been throwing out a great deal since this group has gotten together, transparency. I think by putting this into the fund balance, and if we were going to use that money for anything else, that would be the most transparent way to use that money. If we were to take this money and kind of side-slip it into another area before it goes into the fund balance, I think we're being... the fund balance, I think we're being a little less than transparent. I don't think it would be a good policy.
Other comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I appreciate CJ's comment on transparency. Part of my concern with transparency and transferring $2.4 million into fund balances our group, and I appreciate this is a different budget year, and there were a lot of things going on, but I am willing to bet a lot of people right now, other than one sitting in this audience, don't realize that we have effectively a $2.4 million surplus right now.
We're live streaming, so everybody knows.
Yes. And we are also talking about, in the course of this meeting, potentially acquiring the Parsons property, doing environmental investigation, due diligence on the Parsons property, which requires money and funds to do. We are currently, we have two committees devoted to the Farmington High School and what we're going to do about that, and there's money associated with that, that need, that there are costs associated with that. And at some point, we are going to be going back to the public and saying, well, now we have to spend this money. But we had $2.4 million in surplus the previous year. And while my understanding, and to me, this may, I am not an accountant, so some of this seems to me to be semantics, but my understanding is that you don't touch your fund balance once it's in there, because, and that's something that the auditors look at. So maybe Joe can speak to that comment in terms of when something gets, because the last budget thing I went to when I got sworn in, sponsored by one of the many organizations, was you don't withdraw from fund balance absent diary emergency.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure what, where you went for your seminar or whatever. First of all, misconception, auditors will tell you that you should have a large fund balance or a fund balance that's adequate within the range. It's like, it's the rating agencies that really focus in on your fund balance. The auditors, quite frankly, don't care what you, whether you appropriate fund balance or not, it's the rating agencies. And it's your prerogative whether you want to appropriate fund balance or not. It's not the auditors or the rating agencies, or my prerogative, it's your prerogative, you're the fiscal authority. What the rating agencies will, will say is, if you have a dependency upon fund balance, in other words, if you're using fund balance every year consistently for your operating budget, then they have a problem with that. If you're at a reasonable level of reserve and you're using it for one-time purposes, and they're not, I mean, they may criticize, but that, it's, you're not going to, they're not going to harm your rating because of that, they may make a comment about it. But again, it's the dependency. If, say, for example, if you were to take this $2 million and appropriate it in next year's budget to keep taxes low, there would be a comment about it. The rating agencies would say, hey, you know, what are you going to do in the following year when you don't have $2 million? Are you going to increase taxes by $2 million? If you appropriate, you know, $200,000 or, you know, or $400,000 or $600,000, and you're putting it towards a specific capital project, the Parsons property or something, a one-time thing where you're, it's not depending on your operating budget, you know, it's, it's more acceptable. I mean, again, nobody, they don't like to see your fund balance go. It's the same principle, you save money for a purpose. You know, I preached to this council for the past five years that we should build up fund balance, not so much because the rating agency said so, but because I actually was thinking that we should use this fund balance at some point to counter the debt service that was coming on because of the WPCA project, which fortunately, we didn't have to do. So, you know, it's a matter of philosophy. You're the ultimate authority. You get to decide what you want to do with fund balance. And so, and you could do it anytime you want. We, during the storm of 2012, 2011, we had the snowstorm, the council came in November and appropriated fund balance to increase the budget to meet the needs of the cost of the storm. So you could do it at any time, and, you know, it's not something that you have to do at a certain point in time, it's not something you can't do. Again, it's just how you use, you use it. Think about it in your own principles at home. If you have savings and you decide, well, I'm going to use that savings next year to just meet, make ends meet, you know, then you have a problem. But if you have savings and it's there for an emergency, it's there for a big purchase, I'm going to go out and buy a house, I'm going to buy a car, I'm going to buy a trailer, you're doing what you want, you're supposed to do with your savings. So I guess that's the philosophy I would, would have with this. You know, it was surprised that, it wasn't a surprise that we had this fund balance, and I hope you don't feel that you were surprised, because I actually told you about this in March, the potential is in March. So, so this is actually, has been out there.
Go ahead, Paul.
Oh, thank you. So when we voted to increase the target range to 12% to 15%, I know we were hovering at the lower threshold for a while. So this is obviously a breath of good news that we're right in the heart of that range now. One of the things on the FHS Finance Committee that we're seeing is, you know, with all the work with the high school and even the K-8 schools and the Friar Report are, we're going to be pushing that 10% metric, one way or another, over the next several years. So I look at it as a really good thing for us not to be pushing it on this metric and hovering around the low end. I like that we're well within this range. Personally, I don't see, to CJ's point, I don't see the downside in, you know, accumulating it in the fund balance today. And if we do decide as a council to allocate a limited portion, we can still do that, albeit within the range, as Joe said. So I would be in favor of going forward with this today, should we vote on it.
I just want to do, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to do a follow-up comment in terms of the rating agencies' comments. So if this $2.4 million was all moved into the fund balance, and we as a council decide to take some of that out, but stay within our target range of the 12% to 15%, because that's our policy, 12% to 15%, would they still consider a comment against our rating? And I know you probably don't know, so I think you're, I'm just asking you, do you think that they would make a comment even though we're staying within our policy range, but we're appropriating some money because we know, like Patty had said, that we got the Parsons, we've got other environmental concerns?
Again, I don't think, will they note it? Probably. You know, would they, would they note it, but, would they note it in a negative light? Probably not, okay? Again, it's how you use it and your reliance on it. It's, it's, you know, it's the idea that, say, you own the Parsons property, and say the Parsons property is worth $2 million. And you say, we're going to sell the Parsons property, we're going to get $2 million, and we're going to put it in our budget, and it's going to help fund our expenses next year. It's not a good practice. You don't sell the Parsons property, the year after, you don't have it. It's the same principle with this. If you're going to use this $2 million in total to fund your operating, help fund your operating budget next year and artificially keep your taxes down, it's a bad policy. If you're going to use this because you have CIP needs that you want to meet, you know, I'm not going to say they're not going to note it, because they may note it. Are they going to note it in a negative light? Probably.
Yeah, and I think, again, just the other thing, it's, again, we say it a lot in some of these committee members, you have to look at everything as a big picture. It's not just, in a moment of time, it's not just one thing or the other, is that, as we've discussed, AAA bond towns like we are, are always closer to 15%. That if you're a AAA bonding town, we have never been at that number. So again, us putting this much money in is going to, I think, look very favorably on it. On the other side of the equation, if you're talking about $200,000 of that big amount, they're still probably going to look really pretty favorably that you put that much money into your, your account. So again, it's, it's, but they're not, like Joe said, they're not going to look at it if you put the 200 for your operating budget versus 200 to a one-time expense. So, but it's, again, you've got to look at that, of course, 13.57 in our history, this is really great, but AAA bond rating towns are usually 15%, and that's what they strive for. But this is an extraordinary year where you don't see this kind of thing, and if you're talking about $200,000, I think if, in this moment of time, if we still financially do what we should be doing, I think that that's not going to weigh, you know, make, rock the ship that much.
I'm unclear as to if we're not taking this excess revenue over expenditures of $2.04 million and putting it in fund balance, what exactly are we doing it? I mean, if we're keeping it aside and saving it in a little pile over here because we might need it for different things, where is it, where is it going, Joe? What are we doing with that money if it's not going to fund balance? It's just sitting in cash, basically?
No, no matter what you, well, again, that's, think of it as a funnel, I guess. You threw in revenues, you threw in expenditures, they netted out, came through the funnel, and flows into a bucket. That bucket's called fund balance. If you put in not enough revenue and too much expenditures, that bucket gets lower. If you put in more revenue and less expenditures, that bucket gets higher. That's basically what fund balance is. It's a term, it's a...
Savings.
You have a checking account, or you have, you have, you have your own finances at home, and December 31st comes, and you brought in $100,000, and you spent $98,000. What happens to that $2,000? You, you have $2,000. Yes, it could be in cash, or, you know, it could, you could move it to a savings account.
I think, I think CJ's question was what, and I don't think it's a question to Joe, I think it's a question to the, we don't know.
We don't know, I don't know what, I don't know what the...
Wants to do with it. I don't think that's our, that's not our, that's not our question.
We're just leaving it, in essence, in cash to do with what we will. I would much rather see it go in the fund balance, and whatever we're going to do with it, whether we're talking about the Parsons property or some major expenditure, I'd rather be doing those things in the light of day, having the discussions around this table, and the public says, yeah, we're on board, than setting aside just in case we need it later. I mean, we've, this money is a very fortunate thing that we got state funding where we didn't really expect the state funding when we, the year that this particular budget was done. So we have now this balance that was unexpected. I think for the townspeople, we take that balance that's unexpected, we put it in the fund balance, and if we find a reason that it should be spent on something that's important, and we feel is important, we should be able to explain that to the town and say, this is why we're taking the money out. And I think, to Joe's point, not that we know exactly how the rating agencies will determine, look at these things, but if we're taking money out of the fund balance for something that is an expense of the town, and it's not for our day-to-day expenses, they can, and maybe you compare it to, for us in our lives, if we take money out, we take a home equity loan, and we're putting on an addition. That's a little different than taking a home equity loan and going on a vacation, or going to the casinos. This is money we're putting in the fund balance, we'd be taking out to put on the addition to the town. If it's coming to the Parsons property, if it's for work to be done on a potential major project. So I'd just rather see it go the way we've always done in the past.
And I think something that we need to understand, too, is that even though this money came in this year, we still did not, the amount we originally thought we would get in grants, that's not what this is. This is still less than that amount that we were going to get originally. So, and we are looking at the possibility, what, I would rather wait for this money, too, and put it in fund balance now, knowing full well, we can do this in November, December, if we, if we choose at that point, because I'm all in for the Parsons property. I think we need to go, move forward with that. We don't have the information right now. I don't know that we're going to know that much more in two weeks, as far as that's concerned. So I don't think we're going to have, have the answers for that. But also, we're looking at deficit in the state. We don't know where that's going. I feel more comfortable waiting on all of this and knowing that we can still do this, we can still put something in, whether it's the Parsons property, or if we needed something somewhere else. But I just, I don't feel that it's the right thing to do right now. I think, I think I'm happy to, to do that maybe at some point, but right now, I think we should be putting it in. I'm delighted to have our fund balance grown. We haven't been able to do that. And this, this, just this scenario has allowed us that opportunity, I think. That's the way I look at it right now. So I would like to do that, because we don't know what next year's going to bring. And hopefully, we can be, be taking something out and putting it toward a need we have, and to explain to the public what we're doing, why we're doing it, and have a lot of information about why, and we're moving forward, so. Edward?
I just want to make a quick comment about the transparency that CJ alluded to. You know, whichever way we end up going tonight, I don't think moving the decision to October 21st at a public meeting, at a meeting where all these people and anybody else who wants to show up, can show up and make public comment, and having it livestreamed on TV, I don't think that's not being transparent. I think that is being transparent. So I just want to make that perfectly clear.
I don't think there's any need for the delay. That's, that's the part I'm talking about transparent, I'm not talking about this, this discussion that we're having, and I'm not, and I'm not saying anyone's trying not to be transparent. I don't think that's anyone's intent at this table. I just think setting aside funds, rather than doing what has been the norm for this council for, I don't know how many years in the past, and putting it in fund balance, by not doing that, I think you're opening up questions that don't need to be opened. And again, for any of the ideas that we've thought of, where we might put this money to good use, we should be able to explain that to the public. So I think by delaying it another two weeks and October 23rd meeting, that certainly won't change anything. We'd still be setting aside money if we're not putting it in fund balance. I just think that's wrong.
Other comments?
I guess I wasn't thinking of setting aside money versus putting it all into fund balance, but we had very specific requests in this last budget process for facility needs at the schools and in our other town buildings and other capital needs and things that, that we cut, quite frankly, out of requests. So there are things that are considered priorities and important needs in the town and in the schools. I don't see it as setting it aside for something just in case or without specific direction. It was my understanding that this could, we could take this opportunity, rather than putting 100% into fund balance, a small portion. Joe clarified the tiers of, you know, $200,000 just with town council for some specific projects that maybe we didn't feel we could fund at the time of the budget, but now the books are closing and we're looking at a, as Patty mentioned, a surplus of about $2.4 million. Just seems like now would be the time to kind of reassess and take a look at where we are with, with the budget and where we could support some of those requests that we didn't feel able to.
Paul?
Just to address that point, Beth, we, I think we gave quite a bit of money this past budget to the schools, and there are still, we're still planning on giving, my understanding is tens of millions of dollars, both for the high school project and the K-8 schools. We have quite a bit of bonding that's on the table over the next decade. And if we build up our fund balance to the middle and upper end of these thresholds, I think we can leverage that money to go a long way, to help bond and do all these projects that I think we want to do. So I think we're working towards similar goals, and I think building up our fund balance is one avenue to help get us there, personally.
CJ?
Unfortunately, the comments you just made make me even more nervous about this. We set aside a budget season every year to decide the spending of this town as the fiscal authority. If we're now going to say, we're going to go down this list, and there were other things that we might have done if we felt comfortable putting in a different tax rate, now we're going to spend on those, I absolutely am even more opposed to that idea than I was before. I don't think we can go later on and say, you know what, we didn't do this in the budget, let's just change what our budget was, which in essence is what we'd be doing. We'd be increasing the budget right now, if we're taking this fund balance, this money that I think should be going to the fund balance, and spending it on items that we did not vote to support during the budget. So I really disagree with that. So I hope that's not what we're looking to do, just say, hey, here are the things we couldn't do during the budget, we've got another budget coming up pretty soon, as we all know, we're going to be sitting here going through all those discussions, that's when we decide the spending of the year. I don't think we can take this money and say we're going to spend it on budget. And that, I think, is very different than what some of the comments were earlier. We might have something new coming forward, like the property up on the corner, and some different things that are new issues. But if we're reviewing what our budget was this past year and trying to take this money to change our budget, I think that's absolutely wrong.
I can't, Madam Chair. I think historically, what we also need to consider in that, though, is this is $2.4 million in a, and typically, we don't see that amount. I mean, I think we can all admit that this is...
But there are reasons for that.
Of course there are.
Yeah.
But, but bottom line is, this is $1 million more going to fund balance if we...
But, but bottom line is, this is $1 million more going to fund balance if we, if it goes to that. The year before that, it was $413,000. The year before that, it was 1.2 million approximately. So this is a very, a unique year. And so I just think it's a good time to look at whether or not we agree that that goes 100% to fund balance, or if we want to take a look at what some of the needs are that we didn't address during budget, or something in the future that is specific, but coming up in the future, like the Parsons project. But it's a very specific need. I don't, I don't know that we should, setting aside in fund balance is yes for things to be determined, but if we were to divert some of that from fund balance, and I'm talking a small portion, as Kathy mentioned, $200,000 for one project or two projects is a pretty small percentage, and I don't think is going to affect, because I agree with Paul, we need to leverage this, the percent we have in fund balance is very important when we look at bonding and, and our financial state, but the amounts that we're talking about considering wouldn't not make that much difference in this 13.6% for fund balance.
Paul.
Just, just to your point, if we really were going to limit it to 200,000, that's something we could do at any point. We wouldn't, that wouldn't be a referendum, so I think that's even more of a reason to just go forward with it as planned, and if it truly is going to only be 200K, we could do that at the next meeting, if we wanted to. We could do it in January, if we wanted to. I'm not advocating that we necessarily should. I'm just saying we could, if the group wanted to, just to make that clear.
It's a different process at that point.
Okay. Patty and CJ.
I have a question. I know that a lot of the revenue was based on, the excess revenue was based on getting more state grants than was anticipated as part of the budget process. Were there any conditions on the grants? If there were conditions, did we meet those conditions? Did we spend the money that was granted? Are we required to spend that money? What's the state of those grants?
No, there's no conditions that, on those grants. Those are grants that come to the town to help finance operations of the town. You know, the biggest, biggest one was the ECS. We did not, we budgeted half. The governor had proposed eliminating it. We budgeted half of it, and that money came in, that the full, almost the full amount came in. The other part of the education grants was, and I brought this up at a joint meeting of the council and the Board of Ed, was almost $200,000 in a grant that we were supposed to get five years ago, that they finally released to us this year. That, actually, that money, you know, paid principal and interest five years ago. I mean, you know, we actually used a budget appropriation that was to reimburse us for paying principal and interest five years ago. The rest of them are general grants to go to the town for, for operations. But those, those are the two big differences on the grant side.
And CJ?
CJ. Just trying not to beat a dead horse here. But if we're spending that money on items that were in the budget and were removed from the budget during the process, it would seem to me that is also the example that Joe used for it being looked down upon, that we're taking this, we wouldn't take it, put it in the fund balance, we'd make it so we moved the cards around so it didn't go in the fund balance, but we're using that money for regular operating costs, in essence, for something we should have put in the budget, or we felt someone, no?
Well, I was thinking capital.
Okay.
You know, something that, I mean, we've got this Friar report for the schools, and I know Kathy also has a list of, of concerns with town facilities.
I think those are...
That are maybe considered urgent or priority, and I'm just, I wanted a discussion about how my peers felt about maybe looking at that as a possibility while we're sitting here with the numbers and progress.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate how, beginning the dialogue. I think the best place for that dialogue is when the entire town is looking at us, and we're talking about the budget, and we know what's going on. And we can then very easily explain to the town, as we did during this budget season, "Look, we're going to be bonding more than normal, because we think there are serious issues to be addressed." If we have put this money in the fund balance, and we need a large amount needs to come out of the fund balance, and we have a good explanation for the town, I think we should do it. But I think we should do it when the town's eyes are all on us, and everyone is aware. We can all talk to everyone we want in the next two weeks, and try and get people coming to this meeting, whose sole purpose would be to vote on this issue, by the way, because we don't have enough business for a meeting in two weeks, other than this one issue. I'd just rather have the people see it when they're used to seeing the budget discussions.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm recommending that we take a break, and, to recess, and come back with this.
Okay, we're back after our recess. Any comment?
Yes, Madam Chair. I think before we vote on this motion, I guess I would like to hear from all of the council members, because I think it's very important to understand the nature of things that are going on. This is unusual, the $2.4 million. And we know that we have some things going on in our community, and we respect the process in terms of how things work and moving things into the, the fund balance. So I would like, I would feel more comfortable from the council, hearing from all members of the council, if we move forward with this motion, putting everything into our fund balance, and at budget time, we wanted to take money out of the fund balance in the right dollar amount, in terms of what's allowed for this council, and the max is 200,000, to support a couple of projects that we know that the town will embark on. One of them is the Parsons, purchase of the Parsons property. So I guess I would like to get a, I would feel more comfortable moving forward, hearing from the seven council members, that during the budget cycle, knowing that we're planning on moving forward, if everything all works out, based on what we're finding out with the, the finances, but also the environmental concerns, that the council would consider moving some money at budget cycle to appropriate, to support the purchase of Parsons, as well as knowing that we have professional services that will probably be needed for the future school project, and don't know what those dollar money is, that would they support touching that? And making sure that we leave that healthy fund balance number in there. We are in our range. We're well, our policy requires us to 12% to 15%. We would still be in that range, depending on how that math works out. So I guess I would like, and if you don't mind, I would like to ask, you know, all the council members, that during the budget cycle, would you support putting dollars towards the Parsons property for acquisition, as well as professional services for all the work that the ad hoc committee may be doing for the high school project? So who wants to go first?
Go ahead, a question.
Sure.
Would it be only at budget time, which I think of as, you know, the March-April timeframe, or would it be at any point between now and whenever these items or projects were looking for those funds? Because I think we don't really know the timeframe.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess that will be, that's a...
You can tell. Everybody can say what they think.
Yeah.
About both of those pieces, if you...
That, that's a good clarification. So my, my original proposal was during budget season, but obviously, if the Parsons property is moving up faster, you know, maybe we have to do it before. So that's, thank you, Beth, that's a very good clarification. So I just want to hear that level of support from the council, if they consider that.
Go ahead, Patty.
I do support that concept. I think it's important to keep in mind, as Bruce, as Beth pointed out, that we don't know when these funds may be needed. So I definitely want to hear from the council on that component, that it's not just during budget cycle, but during the course of the year. And I know, Bruce, that you mentioned the purchase of the Parsons property, but for me, it's also the due diligence and the investigation that goes with it. But yes, I am in favor.
Thank you.
I am as well. I'm curious, Joe, you might know this from the top of, off the top of your head, so I thought I would go ahead and ask. When we're looking at, as Bruce mentioned, keeping a healthy fund balance, something within our policy, and continuing to grow that, because we do see some steady growth of about maybe one point or so for the last two or three years, that 0.6%, do you know off the top of your head? I have no idea what the dollar figure might be, very roughly, putting you on the spot.
0.6 is about $600,000. Figure, it's 200,000. 0.2 is every $200,000.
So, right, and in my support, I'm not considering anything really that would go much beyond that, but that we're able to keep that healthy fund balance of at or around 13%, but yet support these two projects that we are embarking on now, and will probably need funds to support, so, yes.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I'm making the recommendation, so I, I do support that. So I mean, that's where I would support moving forward with this motion. So I guess I would look towards the other council members.
Okay. And I think the motion we have, if moved forward, is allocating that 93,000, and if we move forward with this, the rest goes into the fund balance, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just reiterating this after two hours of sitting here. Okay. And I can say that I think that there are a number of things, a number of ways we have to look at the Parsons property. And it could, it could be that we needed the money in December. It could be, and if we feel strongly, which I do, that we need to do something, I think we need to look at a number of different ways that we can make that happen. So I, I don't even, I don't know right now, because of the, what you mentioned before, the environmental issues and all, I think we have a number of things to look at, that we need to find out real good information, real, you know, clear information about what does it mean for the town of Farmington? What are we going to take on if, in fact, we were to do that? So there are a lot of ifs out there, but I do support doing something to purchase that property. And it may not be it, it depends on what we think, as far as our environmental issues and what it means for us. But we may have to do something before the budget. I don't know. So we'll have to see where that, where that plays out. But I'm not, I, I don't support taking the fund balance and using it for budgeted items now. I think the budget is the time that we do that, unless there's an emergency. If there's something that we really need to do, if the boiler goes, if something, and we didn't have funds somewhere else, those are, those are emergency things. You can't run the school. I mean, we have to do something then, and that's certainly something. I don't think we're, in the past, we've had some difficulties, and we haven't had to go to fund balance. We've had places that we could, we have been able to take care of it, so. But I, I think the budgeting happens at the budget time, and if we were to do that now, it just, to me, it doesn't serve us well for the public and the community, because we have a whole week, if not more, of budget hearings, and to just make those decisions in a, in a short time span, I, I wouldn't, so. So anyway, I'm supporting doing something with the Parsons. I think that's important.
Just, and that's, I just, because there was two pieces to it. So I just want to make sure the, the second piece was...
Oh, the high school.
Professional services.
Oh, oh.
So like, for like, you know, if you got to start design work, and, you know, whatever, whatever comes out of the, the committees that they propose to the council, so I, whatever professional services...
I can't say a specific number on that at this moment.
We're not asking for any specific number.
But with the high school, we fortunately, unfortunately, you know, we've had that in the past, which it didn't pass, but we're, now we do have the projects looming, and we do have about $300,000 right now that's in a Farmington High School account to help us with that. That was left over from a half a million that we put in, that our council put in last year, so that we had funds to go and work with, so that we could have some design fund, funding for design, or for whatever we needed. We still have that left. We still have that 300,000 there, which is specifically targeted for the high school. But I think we just need to look at all the options as we move forward. But I'm willing to look at things. I don't know, you know, we'll have to see where we go, but we need to...
Yeah, obviously, if the money is needed, I, I'm not saying that we're going to move money into an account that is not needed. So if, if there's dollars needed for professional services, is the council willing to support that? And, and I respect the options that you're talking about, but one of the options would be the fund balance.
And I just, in all, you know, honesty, I have to just, the fund balance going up like that is really, really important, as far as I'm concerned with this council, with the town of Farmington. Because not only is it there for our audit, but when we go out to, when we, Joe goes out and, and does, we do the bonding, that allows us the, to go out and get those bonds and be looked at sooner than, it's not really the way to say it. Joe, what are the two, you, we're at the, I would say, at the front of the queue, as opposed to behind, when we're going out, if you're getting bonds for the schools, and when we have our AAA bonding, that's why it's important, because we're at the head of the class, so to speak, and we have better opportunities when we do have that AAA bonding. So that's why that's so important, and better, better percentages, better bonding funds.
So...
That's why, that's important to me, to maintain that and keep it where it is if we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess I'll go next. So I would be in favor of moving forward with this, with the two conditions that Bruce noted, with, in the future, that there's a consensus here, that we would, we would have a consensus to take some money out for the Parsons property. We know it's something we're going to have to do, assuming there's nothing outrageous in the environmental study that comes back. It was not part of the budget last year, so it's not part of any of that issue. And also, to have, that there'd be a consensus that we take some money out for professional services for the next FHS school building project. We know that's something we're going to have to do. We don't know the exact dollar amount of what that's, that's going to be, like Bruce said, but we know it's something that we're going to have to do. And I think those are two very important projects that, you know, I'd like to see some consensus from the council on addressing those. And also, it was noted that the maximum we would be able to withdraw for each of those projects would be $200,000. So at the very, very maximum, that would be $400,000, leaving us with nearly $2 million still added into the fund balance. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. And I, and thank you for adding that point, because I just want to say, that would still put us over 13% when our policy is 12% to 15%. So we're still well above our 12% policy and working towards our 15%. So that doesn't really put us backwards. So I would like to just move forward for the other two council members to give their feedback.
So, I mean, generally speaking, I can commit to keeping an open mind, to spending these resources. You know, the first question I would have is, what's the initiative, and do I support that initiative? So the two you mentioned, the Parsons lot, barring something crazy coming back to us, generally speaking, I support that initiative. So that'd be the first question. The second question is, what's the benefit to taking 200 grand from cash, that costs a million dollars, and bonding 800,000 versus just bonding a million? All that money theoretically would come back to us anyways, when we sold it off. So I, I'd want to see that analysis done and understand that, before making a firm commitment that I will take 200 grand, or, or any amount, less than 200 grand, and commit to that. But I, but I would pursue it with an open mind. Regarding the professional service fees, if that was initiative we were going to talk about, I think we had half a million. We used less than half of that last time, so theoretically, I mean, if we were to use more than we used last time, and I agreed with the initiative and the reason why we were doing that, I would absolutely be open to considering that. But I would want to understand, you know, why we were using more, and, you know, get that, those details before I committed to taking any amount, 200,000 or less, and, and moving it there. So, thank you.
Live streaming just ended, so. The -- Bruce, I think what you're bringing up here is exactly what we're supposed to be doing and talking about for the fund balance. We're not talking about anything that really has to do with the budget cycle. So on that point, I am fully in agreement when we're looking to take anything out of the fund balance. We don't just need to do that during the budget cycle. That's when big issues come up. As far as the Parsons property, I'm a huge supporter of the town taking control of that. And if the best financial way to do that is to take the money out of the fund balance, and I don't know what the options are and what the numbers are, but I would fully support that, keeping in mind that whatever money we spend on the Parsons project, and I -- Paul sort of touched on this, we do fully expect to get money back on that. And I would assume we'd be putting that back in fund balance when we got whatever we got for then selling or developing that property. So that's almost like loaning ourselves money with, you know, probably a fairly low interest rate. As far as the cost for doing the work, building up to that, whatever we need to do, that we have to do our due diligence. So I support funding that, whether we need to take it out of the fund balance or not at that point in time. We have to determine. But if that's the only way we can get that done, yes, I think we need to get it done. Also, with the work in and around whatever comes of the high school, I mean, we're talking about money for the high school. We haven't even sent our survey out. So first, we need to know what the public wants and is interested in doing. And if that entails amounts of money that need to be spent, then we need to find out how best to spend it. There are monies available currently, so it's possible. There's no need to do that. But I fully agree, this isn't something that has to be on budget cycle. When we go into the fund balance for a big issue, it's when that issue comes up. And Parsons isn't going to happen to be on our schedule. We're sure that the state hasn't asked us, you know, "When do you want us to tell you how much it's going to cost?" So I'm comfortable with what you're talking about. I think that's how we're supposed to deal with the funds balance.
Thank you.
So I think we're back to the motion. N3. Are there any other questions on the motion before us? All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to ratify the attached tentative agreement between the town of Farmington and Farmington Public School Employee United, AFT.
Second.
Kathy.
So the town and the union met to negotiate pension in accordance with Article 19 of the collective bargaining agreement in effect between the union and the Farmington Board of Ed. The town is the responsible party to negotiate pension benefits. This union represents the Board of Education non-certified staff such as the clerical, secretarial employees, custodials, and paraprofessionals. This group represents the largest unit of employees in the existing defined benefit plan. The highlights are that for employees hired on or after July 1, 2019, the town will provide a defined contribution DC plan for retirement purposes in lieu of participation in the pension. This places all new hires in this unit on the same plan design as almost all our town employees. Teachers and police are not in the DC plan. Employees are going to contribute a maximum of 6% and 6% of the employee's annual base salary and may contribute up to the maximum allowed by law. The town will match the contributions 100% to an amount equal to 6%. And the pension fund will see savings from this change, however exact impact is unknown, due to the need to contribute 6% for each of the employees' plan. As more employees move off the defined benefit plan onto the defined contribution plan, this will savings will grow significantly. This has been a big initiative of us, that we wanted to have the largest group on the school sides of their new employees to move off the traditional pension plan and onto the contribution plan. So this is that agreement and that we worked out with them, and now they're similar to the town. And I think our long-term liability will be greatly reduced because of this. So I think this is a great thing, and we're moving -- I think I would encourage you to support it.
Questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, N5.
Yes, I move to establish an auditor ad hoc subcommittee with the following voting members. Paul Sianci, Town Council Chair -- Town Council Member Chair.
Switch that quick.
Yeah. Patty Boy Williams, Town Council Member, and the following non-voting members, Joe Swetskiy, and Director of Finance, and to review the current policy for appointing auditors, to audit the town's financial records, to review the current contract for auditing services, to determine if a new solicitation for auditing services is appropriate at the present time, and to create a timeline and process for soliciting a new auditor.
Second.
Questions? Okay. Thank you, Paul and Patty.
Yes, thank you.
For stepping up. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Great. Five. Oh, we just did that, sorry. Six.
I move to cancel the October 23, 2018 Town Council meeting.
Second.
Any questions?
I just want to note that Ed seconded it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Good, seven.
I move to approve the following property taxes totaling $11,403.20.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstent -- nay? Abstentions, getting later. Thank you. Is there any?
Oh, there -- I think there's collective bargaining.
Do you have one?
Beth, do you have one tonight, or no?
No, because we don't have a meeting.
Oh, okay, so no.
Perfect, no executive session. Bruce.
I move to adjourn. Second. Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Great.